Our regular hearings, and the first one this evening is application sixty-six-ten. And the location is ninety-
Sixty-ten, excuse me.
Sixty-ten.
Is it sixty-ten?
Sixty-ten.
Did I make another-
No, it's sixty-ten.
No, it's me. Location is ninety Hamlin Avenue.
And board members.
And it's a raise and reconstruct, and all of the sitting members will be voting members on this.
Thank you.
Application sixty-dash-ten being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section eleven of Chapter forty-eight of Massachusetts general laws, you are hereby notified that Anthony and Jody Karinch, if I mispronounced it, I apologize, applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for special permit pursuant to Sections two-forty-three of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at ninety Hamlin Ave., Falmouth, Mass. Publication date, September fourteenth and September twenty-first, two thousand and ten.
Okay.
Technical difficulties.
So we will hold that against you?
Thank you. Thank you, Tom Bunker.
Tom is always supposed to have you, thank you.
Representing Jody and Anthony Karinch. Anthony is here with us. Jody is out in the hall. Architect Allison Melissa is here also. Ninety Hamlin Ave. We have a pre-existing non-conforming structure on the plan. The north property line, the corner of the house, is only three-point-six feet from the property line, the existing house, and it is also non-conforming to the edge of Weeks Pond. Requirement fifty feet from a pond. The house is forty-two feet. So we have two non-conformities on this lot. What they're proposing to do is tear it down, rebuild a new house. The plans are here. The existing house is six-hundred-and-sixty-two square feet, fairly small. The proposed house is nine-hundred-and-seventy-two square feet footprint area. Still a fairly small house on a six-thousand-seven-hundred-square-foot lot. So the house got narrower and moved slightly to the south, where the existing house is eleven-and-a-half feet to the south property line. The proposed house will be ten-and-a-half feet. So we closed that gap a little bit there, but still kept it conforming on that side. On the north side, it moved from three-point-six feet. The closest part of the, there's a little stoop on the north side, some steps, so seven-point-one feet, as opposed to the three-point-six feet of the existing house. And actually, that stoop there has a small roof over it that extends only about three feet out from the wall. And so it's, it's only up, the roof there is only up one story, so it's not much of the structure. The main body of the house is nine-point-six feet. It's not quite ten feet, but close to conforming. We could not move it closer to the road because in getting it narrow to closely, to conform in the width, the house did get longer, it's closer to the street, but because of the existing septic system and the need to maintain a reserve area septic system and the septic tank, it is, there's just no room to move it closer. So we can't get it to meet fifty feet from the pond, and if we were to squeeze it down to the south property line in ten-point-one feet, we could just make it to the ten feet on the north property line. But we feel it's a great improvement of six feet on the north property line, so we kept it that way to make sure that the south property line stays conforming. In all other respects, the existing house covers nine, nine-point-two-eight percent of the lot. The proposed house covered fourteen-and-a-half percent, which is under the twenty percent allowed. The total coverage on the existing lot is twenty-point-one percent. The proposed coverage, including paving and parking, is twenty-three-point-six percent, which is within the allowance. So I believe that this house is an improvement. It's less non-conforming dimensionally to the setback requirements. It's still a fairly small house, but it will be, because of the upgrade, the improvement to the structure, it will be an improvement to the neighborhood. It will not block views or vices, and we feel it will not be a detriment to the neighbors of the neighborhood. So I'll take questions.
Thanks, Tom. I'm going to ask the clerk to review the referrals and any correspondence first.
Building has no comment. Engineering has see attached, and some of these issues have been addressed in a new plan. Lot is covered by subsurface sewerage. There's no comment on that water service, not shown on plan. That's been revised, that it's there. No changes to existing parking or access are proposed. No drainage calculation was provided for sizing drywells. Extra attention be focused on erosion control to Weeks Pond. Engineering Division looks for separate, separation from drywalls and property lines of ten feet. Does not, there does not appear to be adequate room in the site to provide all of the above, which is shown on plans. Natural Resources, no comment. Board of Health, no objections. The plan by BSS Design addressed septic concerns relating to an increase in flow from the third bedroom. If the project proceeds to a buildable phase, a plan that is submitted with the building permit application should be stamped by a civil engineer. It's a copy of the same facts I just read. Planning has no comment. Natural Resources has no comment. Design Review has no comment. And there's three letters of support in the file from the butters.
Okay. Then Tom will start with some questions. Okay?
No, I have no questions.
Tom, you're going to eliminate all of the whole foundation for all new?
It's all coming out, yes.
That's your only question, I hear.
Conservation's?
No, there's nothing.
Thanks.
Tom, it appears the basement's going to be finished?
Yes. Sorry, no, no bedrooms could be finished.
Thanks, that's all.
Tricia.
Have you been to conservation, Tom?
Yes.
And?
Hearing was closed. There was one small revision. They requested a drywell in the rear. I don't think that we had a decision yet.
And they gave us no referrals.
No referral.
I tried to get any, some information, but I was too late.
I don't have any other question.
Tom, just so that we can have it for the record, the engineering department had a number of issues. The last one concerning me the most, it said that everything you want to do can't be done on that lot. Can I paraphrase correctly? You comment on that?
I think what he said was, everything that they were suggesting can't be-
Couldn't be done on the lot.
That is keeping, it's the first time I've had engineering comment on the drainage for a house.
But isn't that great that the departments are all working closely together?
Yeah, isn't it great? I'm the first one.
Test.
I think his last comment was, it seems to be a good-
Compromise.
What was the, what was the term?
Compromise.
Compromise.
Compromise, sorry.
Compromise.
Compromise.
Like you're saying, you can't keep the ten-feet setback for the drywell from the property line, and I have to keep twenty-five feet from the septic system of any drywells. Since that referral was written, we added a different drywell in the rear of the house at the suggestion of the Conservation Commission to better, to better make sure that runoff won't go to the pond.
But in fact, you did apply to conservation-
Oh, yes.
And we just don't have word for it.
It was closed, close to three weeks ago. We don't have our resuscitation.
We'll take your word for it.
It was closed.
The basement. The concern that we always have, of course, is when an office grows into a bedroom, and it's obviously been left open without a door. Are you willing to case that in so that it's less likely to become?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then I have no questions. I'll turn to the audience. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this new home? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor of it? It's nice to see the photoelectric array. Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to come up and identify yourself for the record.
Catherine Scott, I got the notice, and I didn't realize that I was in a butter of this property, but since I'm here, I don't see any problem with building the house.
Okay, thank you very much. You must live across the pond. All right. Anything else, Suri, question?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Then back to the board. Enough information, and if so, are you ready to close?
Yes, you have to close.
Second. Okay, that's Dennis and Ron. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so we have closed this hearing. A motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. Application sixty-dash-ten.
Seconded.
Okay, and this is for Vavoli and Mr. Murphy. Conditions?
I think it should be limited to three bedrooms that are on the plan.
Definitely.
Okay.
Yep.
Where it's so close to the pond, do we want an asbill?
Definitely.
Definitely.
For all setbacks and?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Please.
No bedrooms in the basement and the office to be cased in, the opening to be cased in.
Just the office space?
Just the office space. The other storage and crawl space and utility. Any other?
Final asbill.
What, so we just, got that, thank you.
Then the findings would be, I think Mr. Bunker has stated them nicely first, but certainly an improvement to the law.
Definitely.
And it is an improvement in terms of the non-conformities, and I understand the struggle, and I think you did a great job in terms of getting that where it is. I think it's an improvement to the neighborhood, and it does not interfere with any views and vices.
So with those conditions and findings, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? To the man who spoke. Good luck on that.
Thank you.
My next application is sixty-three-dash-ten, Carolyn Powers, seventy-seven Burnham Drive in Falmouth, and this is a request for an accessory apartment.
Application sixty-three-dash-ten, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section eleven of Chapter forty-eight of Massachusetts general laws, you are hereby notified that Carolyn Powers of Falmouth, Mass. applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for special permit pursuant to Sections two-forty, twenty-three I of the Code of Falmouth to create an accessory apartment in the basement of the single-family dwelling located at seventy-seven Burnham Drive, Falmouth, Mass. Publication date, September fourteenth and September twenty-first, two thousand and ten.
Welcome, Ms. Powers.
Thank you. Is it okay?
It sure is. You're doing it just like the professionals do, so go right, go right ahead.
All right. Oh, good evening. I'm Carolyn Powers. I am applying for a special permit pursuant to Section two-forty dash twenty-three I to create an accessory apartment within the ground floor of our residence at seventy-seven Burnham Drive. The plan is to convert four-hundred-and-seventy-two square feet of living space into a studio apartment with two means of egress, on the western side through the apartment and an egress on the eastern side through the existing garage. The unit will meet criteria in the following ways. Seventy-seven Burnham Drive is owner-occupied twelve months of the year, and the character of the premises will not be altered by interior conversion.
Next one.
The accessory unit will have floor area greater than four-hundred-and-fifty square feet and less than seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and will occupy eighteen percent of the principal structure.
Did you say eighteen?
Eighteen.
Thank you.
The lot size is forty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-seventy square feet, and the total number of bedrooms is three, which is within the allowances. The lot is not within a Water Resource Protection District or a Coastal Pond Overlay District. A parking space will be assigned on the existing driveway apron, and the two additional entrances will not alter the current view from the road, which is head-on to the north side of the house, so the west side and the east side entrances won't be visible from the road. The unit will be a year-round rental, and we will abide by the deed restriction and lease the apartment to a household with an income eighty percent or less of the Barnstable County median income, and the gross annual rent will not exceed thirty percent of the median income. And that rental figure for two thousand and eight was nine-hundred-six dollars a month, and we will not be charging any more than that. And as long as I own the property, I will provide a letter annually to the Board of Appeals certifying that these percentages are maintained. And finally, the outward appearance of seventy-seven Burnham Drive will remain that of a single-family residence.
You did quite well.
Great.
You saved me from having to go through all of these things, so thank you very much. We're going to ask the clerk to review the referrals and any correspondence first.
Building, the accessory apartment shall comply with Mass. State Building Code for egress and for safety. No comment from engineering, no comment from planning, excuse me, Board of Health, no increase in bedrooms proposed, waters, no comment, and there's no correspondence.
Okay. Questions? Brian?
I have none. Dennis? Yes. Carolyn, it looks like you're going to be assigning the parking for the studio in your turnaround hearing. How will the cars turn around?
Well, currently, there is enough room from experience to have a parked car and to back out of the garage with a wide turn and then head back down. This car, when it's parked, head back here and then head out. So no one will be forced to back out the driveway.
Great, that's what I wanted to hear. Okay.
If somebody hit somebody, they won't exactly who did it.
Yes.
Okay. My only other question is on the shed.
Yeah.
Talk to us about the shed.
Okay. It's a ten-by-twelve shed, and it was installed in two thousand and four. We were not aware that its location was in violations code. Code says that it has to be fifty feet from the street line and ten feet from the lot. It is indeed more than ten feet from Lot thirty-three, so it satisfies that, but it's twenty-nine-and-a-half feet from the street. So if it's necessary, I have talked with Ralph Bartlett at the shed place, and he has assured me that once a couple of trees are cut down, it will be possible to move the shed twenty-one feet to the south, keeping in mind that we have a huge, we'll put a way there, and then it will indeed be fifty feet from the street.
You do understand that that will be required?
Okay.
Because the shed is not more than ten years old?
It is not.
And it is larger than a hundred square feet?
Okay.
And that's, that's all.
Actually, all the questions have been asked, and thank you for your honesty on that, because you could have said, I don't know, it might be more than ten years old, and it could have been grandfathered. But you did an excellent presentation. I have no questions. Tricia.
No, I have a comment I will reserve to our discussion.
Suri.
No, just, I want the board to keep in mind, if you do happen to condition that shed, if you do approve this, that that would be a finding, also because that shed requires a special permit, fifty feet in front of the house, and it appears it still will be fifty feet, or still will be in front of the house. So it's up to the board how you want to handle that.
Can we not amend this application?
You have every right to. I'm saying it's the board's discretion, but just keep in mind, you really need to make that clear in the decision.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I don't want her to come back.
I would hate to have her file another application, spend a fee, so let's finish our discussion, and my inclination would be that we amend this application to also grant a special permit for a shed to be within the fifty feet.
No.
To be in the front yard.
More than, fifty feet are great. Go ahead, Tricia.
Well, I, we're not discussing yet.
We can. I thought you had a question.
No, I don't have a question.
I'll go to the public then. Is there anyone here that is in opposition to this accessory apartment? And it will be an affordable unit, that's already been stated. Okay, anyone in favor? I know you would be any. Okay, to the board, let's have some discussion. Tricia.
The shed. How many people really noticed the shed when they went out there?
Oh, I did immediately.
You did, but it is nicely screened, and in order to move the shed, they have to cut down trees. We've granted sheds in the front yard before. This is just my, this is just, I'm just throwing it out, it's just my opinion that-
I don't disagree with you, but the difference is it would be a variance.
That's separate.
That's true, too.
If they're willing to do this, it hopefully won't cost a whole lot. We'll save the extra hundred bucks they're coming back in, and we can modify this for a special permit. Suri.
And it would require a variance, which you cannot do.
Yeah, which you can't do. I'm just-
And I don't think we would.
Hate to see more trees coming out.
And separate.
Me, too.
Separate criteria.
Yeah.
Which I doubt-
If it was four years older?
All right, we'll move along.
Different issue.
And, you know, just as we're now discussing, very, very nice job, really, in terms of coming before this board. I don't know where you got your expertise, but some folks that are here could learn a lot from it.
Suri was very helpful. She attended a hearing as well.
Well, thank you for saying that about Suri. We feel the same way. And quite frankly, you will never, ever know that it's there. The, where you're proposing to put the egress, there's a hedge right behind it, so the stone wall is a nice little retaining kind of thing, it'll fit into the landscaping. I think that's one of the nicest accessory apartments we've seen, in all time.
I would like to see the parking on the plan, though. That's the only thing that we don't have, is a notation where the parking is on the plan. And I think that could be even something that the applicant could pencil in as a reference for us.
If she can pencil it in, would that be all right instead of paying?
Yeah.
Oh, that's why I said, I don't want her to go back to pay-
Because I think the testimony says it's in the, in the turnout area, but-
Right, but I'd like to see it.
You can work with Suri just to-
Yep. I don't want her to have to go back to redraft anything, just pencil it in.
By the way, I'm also inclined to suggest that we modify this, and we'll do it in a separate vote, to include the shed in the front yard.
Should we do that first?
Yeah, but let's finish our comments, see if there's anyone else that's opposed to the direction we seem to be going in. Ron.
Well, I, for the record, I personally feel that imposing an extra expense on a shed, as Tricia pointed out, is not objectionable in terms of the view of it is, it bothers me that we're doing this, we do it a lot, these are tough times.
I was thinking the variance.
I know we have to do it, but I just want to be on record as saying I personally am against that philosophy.
It's not philosophy, and I don't disagree with, I don't think anyone's here, I think we're all very empathetic to the issue. The reality is, it's a variance.
I understand.
And a variance, we can't just not pay any attention to.
Want to go on record as being against?
Okay. Patty?
I'm, well, I was doing that with the shed.
Okay. All right. Then, why don't we modify first, see if there's any comment on the modification, because we haven't taken any testimony on the changed application. So I'll entertain a motion to modify this special permit to also include approval of an accessory structure in the front yard, which is within fifty feet off the road. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. For the folks who may be paying attention to this, we had an application that was for an accessory apartment, but in the process of reviewing and doing our site visit, we found a shed that was out of compliance. We'll try to find an easy way for the applicant who's willing to do this to move the shed further from the street, but in order to do that, we're modifying the special permit. So is there anyone here that's opposed to the shed moving further from the street but still being in the front yard? Is there anyone in favor? Okay. Then we will take a motion out. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That's now incorporated into the main motion, so it's-
Excuse me, was that a unanimous?
It was unanimous, forgive me.
Thank you.
So, any further discussion on the main motion, which is now the accessory apartment, including the moved shed? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant application sixty-three-dash-ten for Carolyn Powers.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay. Mrs. Vavoli and Mr. Murphy. Conditions?
Conditions, no more than three bedrooms.
Per plan submitted.
Per plan submitted, well, with a modification.
With the modification of the movement of the shed and the modification to show on the plan the parking area.
Correct.
Findings would be, it meets all of the requirements of two-forty, twenty-three-
Aye.
Deed restriction?
And yes, which is part of aye, but we'll, we'll highlight that as a finding that the applicant has already-
She's already made it to, it would be the finding that she read and understands.
That's right. That it will be deed restricted for the affordable standard.
That, yeah, I usually just put her, like, two-forty, twenty-three, because the findings state that she's in a manual to it.
No, I think that's what Patty wants. Okay. Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Carolyn, for being so well prepared, and good luck on this, and I hope you do realize we, we understand the difficulty that you'll face with that shed, but something we have to do.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you for adding that affordable unit.
Absolutely. All right. Next application is sixty-four-dash-ten, Eric Christine Kraus, fifty-three Noshawn South in West Falmouth.
Application sixty-four-dash-ten, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section eleven of Chapter forty-eight of Massachusetts general laws, you are hereby notified that Eric and Christine M. Kraus of Walpole, Mass. applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for special permit pursuant to Sections two-forty, twenty-three G-one of the Code of Falmouth to construct garage space for three cars on a lot which is less than thirty thousand square feet located at fifty-three Noshawn South, West Falmouth, Mass. Publication date, September fourteenth and September twenty-first, two thousand and ten.
Now, you noticed the applicant before you had no problem whatsoever with her presentation.
Been a long week for Jen.
She hung it up with no problem, too.
The easel's there, too, Jen.
Welcomes up, and when you get ready for the record, if you would just let people know who you are, even though I know. Thank you, Tom. And while you're doing that, for the board and the public, our view of this application is somewhat limited. We are not reviewing the house, per se. We are reviewing specifically the fact that it's requested for three cars to be garaged on a lot that is under thirty thousand square feet. So that is the only issue this board will look at, and anything that's pertinent to the garage space. But this is an unbuilt lot, this lot is vacant, it's not built upon. We are not looking at the structure itself, except the garage area.
Does everybody have a plan, by the way?
We do. And thank you for doing that.
Well, I'm Jeff Reither with BSS Design. And also with me tonight's John DeVorzak, who's the architect, has prepared these plans. We are under Section two-forty, twenty-three G. That section has a requirement that if you have three-car garage or three garage spaces, which we have in this case, we have a two-car garage with another detached garage in the back of the house, that that is allowed without a special permit on lots over thirty thousand square feet, and if they're less than nine hundred square feet total. feet, and if they're less than 900 square feet total. In this case, we have a lot that is, this is Lot 173, by the way, Noshawn South, this is 24,806 square feet, so we're short a bit there. I've asked John to prepare a little letter on the area, and I'm going to pass it down. It looks a bit attached.
Okay, I'll take it.
That letter basically says that we have 894 square feet of garage area. Again, there's a two-car garage here, and then from the side, and then a one-car garage. In the application, we have that the garage is 576 square feet. It's also noted here on the site plan, but that includes a little bathroom for the pool and this other space known as the fishing room for gear that's not going to be really garage space. So, what's highlighted in color here is the actual garage area. And so, we meet the requirement of less than 900 square feet by 576 square feet, which is a bit tight, by the way, still. The other one is that we are not, it continues on, it says the footprint of the garage, it's more than 900 square feet, or 50% of the footprint of the principal structure. And principal structure, it's noted here in the site plan, is 2448 square feet, so half of that is 1124 square feet. So, that we meet the requirement of be in both areas there. Again, you know, if you were to look at this elevation of the garage, I don't know if you have any questions on that, but it's, here it's not a very tall structure, less than 18 square, 18 feet high. That's, we have one unit here, and again, coming in from the side, and John, do you have anything to add? That about sums it up. Again, it's, you know, the lot is short by, say, 5200 square feet, otherwise, we wouldn't be here today. Any questions?
I'm sure there will be. I'm going to ask for a review of the referrals and any correspondence.
Water Health has no comment, Natural Resources has no comment, Planning has no comment, Water has no comment, and there's no correspondence, except from Jen.
Okay. Questions, Dennis?
I don't have any questions.
Tricia.
Um, Jeff, is there a second floor on the garage, on that detached? The, no.
No, there's not.
Okay.
So, it's just an open window?
It's a, it's a storage table, a pull-down stair, but there's about six feet of room in there.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have.
Did he say locked?
No, he said, storage with a pull-down.
Pull-down staircase to storage.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Patty.
Yes, I have a question, because when we pa, when we changed the bylaw to, from 800 to 900 square feet, it was described as the footprint. Now, the letter that just got passed around said it was an interior measurement, not the... Can you explain that to me?
Well, good question. I think that when you're looking at a garage area integral of the house, you know, what does footprint really mean? Does it mean that, you know, we're part of, that's sort of the footprint of the usable area of the garage? If you were to include the studs, I guess that would, you know, add four inches or so all the way around, and...
Is there a foundation, Jeff?
On the foundation?
Under the garage?
Well, there's a four-foot frost wall, but no space underneath it.
And so, what's the measurement of the footprint of the garage? Of the frost?
Well, I don't have the exact number of that one, because, you know, we're talking, well, this area doesn't count, because it's not really garage space.
What is the structure?
It's the bathroom, so I don't know if we went around the other side, but it's not including those.
Garage space.
And I think, if I can, it's, I think it's a great question. It says garage space for not more than two cars, but then it then says the footprint of the garage is more than 900 square feet. But again, we have the right to...
So, then it's both of them. And he's here under A and B.
Right, we have the right to grant it over 900.
Right.
So, even, so I guess one of the questions of, I'm sorry, Patty, would be if you were to include the fish and bathroom, et cetera, what would that square footage be?
Uh, this is 576 square feet.
Right, got that. And then what's the...
I didn't give you this one.
No, no, no.
I didn't calculate that.
Keep with that same building.
This one?
Yeah, and add in the fishing room and the bathroom, how many square feet are there?
Well, that's the 576.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The whole thing.
Okay, I was, thought you were making a distinction.
It has the right, and also on the application, 576.
Yeah, I thought you were distinguishing it and saying, we're not counting that.
No, I was just saying that that is what I put in the application, where...
He showed that as the square footage of the inside, which you take out the fishing and the bathroom, it's 790 square feet for the two garages. So, he's clarifying that the footprint is what's on the plan.
Okay. Hey, happy Patty.
I don't know. I'm more confused, 7, what's 790, without taking everything into account?
That was my calculation that I sent to you, just only garage space. I didn't count the fishing, because you were asking me something totally, that I took totally different.
So, let's build on that.
But it is nine, if you calculate from the footprint, he's still at 800 and some.
Okay, that's the point.
794, whatever piece of paper went around.
Detached garage, detached garage, no, it's over the 900.
Yeah.
Which the board still can, under A and B.
894, he is saying.
Yeah.
So, you're saying you're definitely over 900 square feet?
I think that if you include the studs, yes.
The footprint, the actual outside, the mission, rather than the actual garage, and therefore not including the...
I would say slightly over that, but, you know, too.
Okay.
I didn't calculate the studs around, I asked John to give me the garage space, because we have sort of an odd situation, we have a structure that's not all garage.
With separate entrances.
It's got a foot and pool back here, so we have a bath.
And is there, under the connection, that's between, there's no foundation in that connecting piece between the house and the garage, so the garage is definitely detached?
Yes, it's a detached.
Because that's just like...
That's this lattice work, I think it's kind of a pergola.
And no foundation underneath, and no footings or stuff. Just whatever.
It has patio underneath, a ways way.
So, it's def, it's clearly detached, and it's under 18 feet. Yep, okay.
The only question?
The only question is the footprint, is the measurement, and we can only, if we can only prove it over...
And we can't, that's the right to do that. Just on the height, you said under 18, is that included in the cupola or not?
I think it's not including the cup, I think the bylaw allows cupolas.
Does it?
And building height.
247?
It doesn't include ornaments or spires or...
Leave it says to the highest point.
Yeah, but there is an exclusion.
Excuse me.
Well, Jeff, do you know it, so you can point us to it?
It's 247, yeah, that's correct. Give me a break. The basic maximum height for principal structures, blah, 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 and for accessory structures is one and a half story, not to exceed 18 feet, as measured from the base of the structure to the highest point, with the following exceptions, agricultural use, public use, light industrial use.
By special permit.
And by special permit, a height of 25 through the GBA.
So, a lot of 2 acres or more.
Right, which isn't any of this. So, the cupola says to the highest point.
So, what is the height to the highest point?
We'll have to...
If it's age, beyond 18, then we'll have to take it off.
If you're saying it's to the cupola count, then it's, it's over.
Okay. All right. But if you remove the cupola, it would not be more than 18.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions. Suri, any questions?
No, my question was on the height.
Okay, good. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the application? Does the board need any additional information?
I'm just wondering if Jeff found an exception for a cupola in there somewhere.
Well, if you look under building height, under, in the definitions...
That's for principal structures, the, if you look at 240-70, it's precise about accessory structures and more restrictive. The building definition under 240-13 is for commercial and principal structures. You are talking about an accessory structure, which would be under 240-70, and limits it to 18 from the ground to the top of the structure.
But it doesn't necessarily say that it's for principal structure.
Read 240-13, building height, but regardless of that, and it does say commercial and some other structure, because I did give that as a note, but, because I dealt with the architect on this, not this one, but on another one. Building height for community service uses and public buildings, building height is defined as the vertical distance, you know, the street grades, the whole bit, but if you turn to 240-70, it restricts an accessory structure even more than a building definition. You are talking about a bylaw versus a definition.
And that was 247?
240-70. Did I say D, I apologize, it's 240-70, seven zero.
Seven zero.
You know, your single-family dwellings, you can get that elevation from the grade on the streets, but accessory structure is more restrictive, according to this one. But it is the board's discretion.
Is it strictly ornamental in nature?
Yeah, it's just a decoration.
It doesn't, even in 240-70, it just refers to, two and a half is 35 feet, doesn't talk about any, any spires or cupolas or whatever.
That's right, it says as measured from the base of the structure to the highest point, which would be the top of the cupola, unless the board disagrees.
I agree with that.
But the rest of them, A through D, deal with different zoning districts and lot size.
I don't see that that cupola is really...
I don't think anybody said it was a nice storage, Jeff, it's just the bylaw.
Well, it's just, you know, but, you know...
All right.
Under 240-70, it talks about two and a half stories, 35 feet, one and a half, 18 feet, and it leaves all the rest of it alone.
It says as measured.
As measured, but then you go to the height, and it gives you...
We've heard it. Okay, we've got, we've got the information, we will discuss it. So, with that, let's bring it back to the board for discussion, okay? It seems like the only issue we have is the height. So, let's give us, you know, the thoughts on that. I don't think I've heard any major objections to approving the three garage areas or the size of it, or anything else, so it comes down to the height of this accessory structure. So, let me just give you the scope of it. It appears that in the definitional section is somewhat different than the actual bylaw section, okay? Strictly speaking, I would say that the definition is there to assist you with applying the bylaw, but the bylaw is the piece that's controlling. That's my view of it. Now, that it doesn't look pretty or anything else, but 18 feet's 18 feet.
I'm actually buying Jeff's argument here. Just reading from building height definition, height limitations shall apply to any extensions of the structure that are integral to the habitable space, regardless of the square footage. Height limitations shall not apply to tenants' chimneys, spires, or minor extensions of the structure strictly ornamental in nature. I think it could easily be viewed as that, and I would be comfortable granting it as proposed.
Other thoughts?
I agree.
Patty?
I would suggest getting a ruling and making sure it's okay with Mr. Gore, so it's not turned away at the building. So, if you want to make a condition, if you're going to approve it, get a referral from Mr. Gore stating that he agrees on an accessory structure, that that is okay, and that would clarify everything.
18 feet is 18 feet.
The, the, having said what I did, you read the actual bylaw, and this is, you know, wordsmithing it, I'm sorry to death, but it says the basic maximum building height. Does that mean exclusive of ornamental things that are mentioned in the definition?
This comes from the building code, the definition.
Yeah. So, I, I, I think, given the fact that we are in favor of this, I think Suri's, it sounds like we're in favor of this, it sounds like Suri's suggestion is a good one. Let's just get a ruling by the building commissioner before he goes through all of these things.
So, what would we be asking?
It'd be conditioned on approval by the building commissioner.
That that's not included.
That it's not excluded by this bylaw.
I've had trouble with building height with this bylaw for a long, long time. And I think maybe you'd definitely need to go to the building commissioner.
Yeah, I think the measuring points...
There are ways to circumvent this particular situation for the applicant, but I think that it's, it's no detriment to grant the tot provided the building commissioner agrees.
Sure, what you're saying is he could have this be permanently attached to the main structure, and then he'd have a 35-foot height limit?
Oh, sure. He could, yeah.
But that's not what he's applying.
No, no, that's not, so that's why I'm saying...
Right, and I think that, you know, this is one of those issues of a conflict in bylaw.
Yes, it is.
And I think Suri's suggestion is a good one, so that we don't have to hold these guys up for, you know...
A whole lot more time.
That's right.
Or have them give it up and not need to.
So, potentially what we're doing is approving it, and then we're just going to leave it up to the building commissioner, whether they can have a cupola or not?
Right, conditioned on approval by the building commissioner of the cupola.
But I will get something in writing to put into the file, definitely.
And the nine, over 900 foot footprint is, we're going to make a finding on that.
That's right. Well, putting into plans, the finding will be yes, over 900 for the overall building, although the garage appears to be within the 900.
240-23G1AB.
Okay, you already applied for both A and B, so you don't have to make any modification or discuss it.
Right, he's, or he's 240-23G1A and B.
So, he applied for both already.
So, he's fine, we don't have to modify anything.
Yeah, so 900's not an issue.
Right.
Okay. All right.
And you think the building commissioner's going to be okay with the footprint?
Actually, the building commissioner has nothing to say about that, it's going to be us, because we, he's applied for the right to be greater than 900, and whether you look at the calc, there's so many different calculations here, certainly, if we do it per plans, it's going to include that building, whether or not you say it's garage or garage plus fishing and bath.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I mean, my view of it is, it's, it's a nice enhancement to the property, and it's minor.
The vacant lot?
Yeah. But I mean, even when you look at this, it's a nice enhancement to it, and it fits in. So, anyway, ready to... Ready to close?
I am.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Mr. Murphy, Mr. Erickson, all those in favor of closing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous vote. All right, a motion on this application.
I'll make a motion to grant application 64-10 for Eric and Christina Kraus.
This is Favouli and Mr. Murphy, conditions.
How do you want to word it?
Yes, her plans, no habitable space.
Her plans, no habitable space in this upper level of the garage.
Why do you want to say no sleeping? Well.
Well, no habitable space in the upper level of the garage because there is habitable space in terms of the fishing room and the bathroom.
So second level storage area.
No, no habitable in the second level of the garage.
That's what I said.
That's right. Trish was saying something else.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, also.
Of the accessory garage, excuse me, of the accessory structure.
Right, of the accessory structure.
Accessory garage.
With the condition that the building commissioner make a ruling on the height applicability to include the cupola. I think those are the only conditions. And, and the findings.
With written verification to the board.
Yep, and the findings are, again, it's only limited to the garage space. It does meet the requirements of 240.
240, 23G.
23G.
1A.
1A and B. Okay. Anything else? All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous vote. Good luck and glad you, thank you for your time. Catch you later on a good day. He always has good days. All right. Any more plans here? Okay. Next application is application 67-10, Ralph Saro, 118 Crystal Springs Avenue in North Falmouth.
Application 67-10 being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of JF48 of the Massachusetts General Laws. You are hereby notified that Ralph Saro of North Falmouth applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for special permit pursuant to Sections 243 of the Code of Falmouth to construct a master bedroom, bath, and walk-in closet in addition to the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at 118 Crystal Springs Ave., North Falmouth, Mass. Publication date September 14th and September 21st, 2010.
My name is Brian Axon and I represent Ralph and Judy Saro.
Welcome, please.
Welcome. Thank you.
Share with us what, what you're trying to do, and then we'll ask questions.
Okay. We are planning to add, requesting the State Department to add a master bedroom suite for the residents at 118 Crystal Springs. The pre-existing condition, the condition meets all setbacks. This will give them a first-floor bedroom with an actual closet, which will help make their living conditions much better. It's pretty, pretty straightforward. I will answer any questions.
And just so that you can have it on the record, the non-conformities are what right now?
The existing home, see the site.
Front yard setback.
Because it's a corner lot, you know, one or the other, neither really meets the setback.
So it's the front yard setback that's the non-conformity?
Yes.
Okay. Need to hear that from you rather than from me.
Okay.
All right, Brian. We're going to listen to the referrals, summary of correspondence, and we'll ask you some questions.
A comment from building, a comment from engineering, Board of Health, property limited to three-bedroom by sewer treatment plant capacity and bylaw, natural resources has no comment, planning has no comment, and water has no comment, no correspondence.
All right.
I'm okay with it, it's only three bedrooms.
Okay, Dennis?
I don't have any questions.
Trisha?
Uh, nope, I have no questions.
Patty. And I meant to say, and you know this, that everyone who's been sitting has been sitting on all this night.
Since there's only five, we guess then.
On the lot, this lot coverage calculation was confusing to me. I'd really like to know how, what is the coverage, not this putting this and that out and, you know, what's the new, what's your lot coverage for the structures after, after you put the addition?
I have to admit that I grabbed the wrong site.
Yeah, but they.
Lock coverage.
19.9, and that's taking out some things and adding the new.
Well, as you can see on the plan here, this is the addition. This is the deck that's there now, that's going away, so it's subtracting the deck and we're adding the addition.
And what size is the shed out here?
All right, if you could, Brian, just step back to the microphone so we all can hear and Patty can ask the question.
What size is the shed?
First of all, let me go back because I didn't get the answers to it. You were asking about lot coverage, was there an answer to that?
Yes, I apologize. The, she was confused about the fact that we're adding the addition and that there is a subtraction. There is a, there is a, there's a, there's a squared deck there that is in the, right where the addition is going and that's going.
She was not at all confused. You probably misled her to some degree.
No, I just wanted to clearly state it, you know, just right in front of me, this is it.
Yes, okay.
And the second question was?
Was on the size of the existing shed, because it doesn't show here, but it's included in this other calculation.
And you heard us do the shed earlier tonight, so.
Yeah, the shed is included in the lot coverage. I believe it's eight by eight, which would make it 64 square feet.
You believe?
I checked with the engineers, because I had the same question.
Okay, so you're set with it being under 100 square feet?
Yes, and it is calculated within.
Excellent.
The lot coverage.
All right. So Ron, Patty, Dennis, did you have any questions?
You already asked me and I did not.
And did I ask you, and you did not?
I do not.
And I do not. I only have a confession, it took me a very hard time to overlay these plans to figure out what was happening with the second floor, because a little squiggle on the, one of them that said, basically realized that the rest of it's going to be the same.
Yes.
I had a hard time with that. I needed my expert. So with that, audience, anyone opposed to this second-floor addition over in Crystal Springs? Anyone in favor of it? Do you want to, for the record?
All right.
All right, we, we, we know that there's no one, okay. Come on up then. Neighborhood is changing.
Yes. Praise God. Yeah, I'm a direct neighbor.
Any name, please?
Ronald Johnson.
Ronald, thank you for coming.
At 84 Arlington Street, right across the street.
Yep.
The shed is, by the way, is a six by eight, or it could be a six by six. It's a very small shed. It's below numb. This guy's not making a McMansion. You know, they've been popping up all over the place. He only wants to make one room on the house. Okay. The guy has medical reasons for doing this, his knees, his legs, and it's a hardship for him to go up the stairs. So that's, that's probably one of the reasons he's doing it. And it's, as a neighbor, I have no problem whatsoever.
Well, thank you for coming out, supporting your neighbor.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Bring it back to the board.
Just have a question, Chairman.
Uh-oh.
Because this is in the new sewer area out there, should we start asking, just for the record, have it in the record now, whether as we approve these different changes in these properties, it is now connected in the sewer system?
It's a good question because.
There is a problem out there.
Right. Is it connected, Brian?
It is tied in.
Okay, great.
My company tied it in ourselves.
Thank you. Good. Do our little bit toward nutrient management here. Nutrient management. Okay. Fords, have any additional questions? Have enough information?
The only thing is on the, on the existing second-floor plan, we're talking about removing the door.
Yes.
We got to go a little bit better than just taking a door off its entrance.
We are going to put a case open.
Great.
The bedroom to the right of the stairs you can see really is a.
And since we're in the discussion stage, I would like a plan for the file that does not use the word bedroom on that room.
Yes.
Okay, because we're going to limit this to three bedrooms.
Right.
And right now, the plans will show four, even though it says no to be removed.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, to close, all those in, motion, please?
Motion.
Mrs. Favouli, Mr. Murphy, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous vote. Okay, let's move forward on this application.
I'll make a motion to grant application 67-10 for Ralph Saro.
Okay.
Second that.
Mrs. Favouli, Mr. Murphy, conditions?
Limit to three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms.
And.
Case open?
Case opening on the room on the second floor.
Modification to the plan to identify a different room other than bedroom.
Yep. Study office, et cetera.
So revise plan and submit prior to building permit issuance?
That's fine. And the plan already is the basement with just utilities in there and crawl space?
Yeah, that's pretty clear.
Okay, with her testimony that it certainly is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, in fact, it's an enhancement, will benefit this particular owner. No concerns of use or visitors, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous vote. Okay, so a couple modifications, a little minor modification before building permit is, you can follow up with Ceri, I mean.
Okay.
Brian, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Saro.
You did good.
Okay, we are going to take a five-minute break.
To warm up.
To exercise, warm up, and those of us who the cold has made us want to go to the bathroom. And then we're going to come back, and we have several items, actually unusually so, following our hearing session. So five-minute break, thank you. That's all.
Okay. So. Okay. So. The accessibility, blah, 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 blah.
You got it. We just have to do 20 days beforehand.
Okay. Okay, okay, good.
What? The other one, however, I thought was.
They had a vacation at a party the other day, so they ran away.
This one? That's like.
Well, we worked all of this stuff into the plan.
Absolutely.
Run the system, move the system.
Yeah, there's those in the fees. Yeah, so those are.
Fancy cookies and breakfast on board.
No.
Sure not for me.
You just got back from China.
I know, I know. I said it.
It was making a point by that house.
In the looks-like condition.
Very forward, so we can be a little bit more intimate.
Are you all right?
Yes.
I am.
No.
Yes, now.
I have three books out. You can buy them all with the comp.
Money goes right into my pocket.
My parents died in a place in Delaware.
Teenage boys.
They left this morning, come back sometime.
We Skype webbed a few travels.
I'm sure my brother is.
I'm sure, I hope so.
That's, that's the coolest part.
Oh, you're a grown-up. Oh, good, oh, good.
Friend of mine, no, I'm sorry.
A soldier, she was in Iraq, who, she was a woman, and she was Skyping with a two-year-old daddy. One day, the kid went on a friend's, and the kid thought his mother was thirsty, so he could have juice on the computer.
Well, we have friends that, who live in France with him. So they Skype their friend all the time.
And they'll go to those who do this thing.
I know.
It just felt so good to be out there.
Trish, we're going to do, I think minutes are first.
All right, thank you, everyone, for giving us a few minutes there. Just to comment on the minutes, has everyone had a chance to read them? Because I had some serious concerns with the minutes.
I read them.
And so I. Earlier this evening, there was a reference to one of the bylaws, it's a critical piece of it, and there's another one regarding a request for continuance, and since it's been brought up and we've been asked to make a vote in the past about why we're doing continuations, I think that should be part of the minutes as well. So I would encourage folks to just really look carefully at these minutes, they're very brief, and with that, I'd like to put this off to our next meeting.
So moved.
Table, table the minutes.
Okay, we're just table the minutes. Okay. A quick update on the nutrient management bylaw.
Have it as a hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I am Laura Moynihan. I'm an attorney from Falmouth, and I represent the Falmouth Housing Trust. With me tonight is George Sanborn, who's a board member, Addie Droulad, who is also on the board, and Annie Saganek, who's the executive director, and Charlie Passios is here, and Kelly Cardoza, consultant for the golf club at Cape Cod. So this permit was granted in 1990. It was known as the Longshank Development. It's now called Esker Place, and it is eighteen housing units on twenty-one acres of land. The permit went through a number of modifications over the years, and originally granted approval for twenty housing units to be constructed on the twenty-one acres, slightly over twenty-one acres, off of Sam Turner Road. What we are looking to do is to modify that permit further, to build two three-bedroom housing units, as are shown on your plans that we filed with you, and also to include within the open space area, a recreational area, golf course, practice area, driving range, which would be land leased by the housing trust to the golf club. And that practice area would be available for use by the residents of Esker Place, as well as the golf club members. So, under the regulations, you've asked me to jump right into that. The board is deemed, or the board is required to determine if the change requested is insubstantial or substantial. If it's insubstantial, then the board can approve it without a public hearing, and could impose conditions on that approval as well, in writing, which would become part of the record for the comprehensive permit. And we believe that the change is insubstantial, and I've set forth the reasons for that in my submission. Essentially, one of the key elements here is that the comprehensive permit originally approved twenty dwelling units. Under the regulations, the regulations specifically cite the change from the original comprehensive permit. So it's not from as modified, it's from the original comprehensive permit. So, in effect, because twenty units were granted originally, this change is not really a change at all. We're going back to the number of units that were originally approved under the permit. We do have the recreational amenity that's being added within the open space, but we think that the board can readily find that that change is also insubstantial as well. It's not going to change the protection of the conservation land and the interests that were intended to be protected there. That practice range will be thoroughly reviewed by the natural heritage under the MESA regulations, and there will be a conservation management plan imposed as part of that review by the state. The regulations also cite examples of what is not considered a substantial change. An example that is cited is that if you're adding units that equal ten percent of the number of units originally approved under the comprehensive permit, or less, then that would be considered an insubstantial change. So, on that basis alone, the request is an insubstantial change, because as I said, the original number of units was twenty, and now we're asking to go back up to twenty. Even if the board looked at the modified number of approved units, which was eighteen, it was modified over the years, two units more is still only ten percent of the original number of units approved. So it's still an insubstantial change, according to the guidance of the Affordable Housing Regulations. The benefits from the change, I think, are obvious. We're going to still maintain a very low density for this subdivision. We've got twenty units on almost twenty-two acres of land. The property is not in a Zone Two of public water supply, but even if it was, we'd still be significantly less than the number of bedrooms that would be allowed in a Zone Two. Twenty-one acres, you can have eighty-four bedrooms, and here, the existing development has fifty-four bedrooms, and we'd be adding another six. So we're at sixty bedrooms over twenty-one acres, significantly less than what would be allowed in a Zone Two under Title V, which is the highest order for protection of public water supply. This is a unique opportunity where the golf club and the housing trust have come together to try and add affordable housing to the community, and to create an income stream through the lease area for the housing trust. I set out in detail in the application what the housing trust uses funds for. There isn't an unlimited supply, unfortunately, of funding sources for all the things that they do: monitoring, grant writing, building housing, developing housing. So this is a great opportunity for the Falmouth Housing Trust, which now has a salaried staff member to help with its mission for many years. It was run by volunteers only, and Annie is very involved in the goings-on with affordable housing, the monitoring process, advising the board. So, the housing trust has really come a long way, I think, from the early days of 1990, when this project was originally permitted, and is now a very reputable agency that's making a real difference in the community as far as affordable housing goes. The housing is shown on the plans. The original waivers from the comprehensive permit would still apply. The 1990 comprehensive permit granted waivers for minimum lot size, frontage, minimum average width, so there's no need to consider waivers. Those waivers would still apply. The housing trust would build the houses and sell them to eighty to one-hundred-and-twenty percent median income earners. So essentially, workforce housing, family housing, three bedrooms, two baths. The practice range would be available free of charge to the Esker Place residents. Annie has met with the homeowners, and there's a letter in your file on behalf of the association in support of the change. It's a great opportunity to have this ability to walk through the esker to the driving range with their guests and use that if they wish. There are a number of families in that development. There also could be the opportunity for employment at the golf club, residents now that there's a walking accessway through that open space. There will not be any lights on the practice range. There's not going to be any noise or other impacts for the Esker Place residents. If you look at the second page of what I gave you, you can see the changes in topography, and in the middle of the open space area, you can see how the lines become very close together, and that's essentially the height of the esker, or the ridge. So, the topography goes up from the Esker Place houses up to the top of the ridge, and then back down again to where the practice range would be located in this area here. So that natural esker provides a natural topographic barrier to the recreational amenity and the housing. The practice range would be operated, you know, six AM to seven PM type of hours. It would be operated by the golf club, and in the spring and fall seasons, those nighttime hours would be limited by sunlight. There will be a permanent conservation restriction that's imposed under state law, under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 184, imposed on the open space area, including the practice range. And that type of conservation restriction is something that's reviewed by the State Division of Conservation Services, would be approved by the selectmen, and likely the conservation commission. And the benefit of that particular restriction is that it is permanent. It's highly regulated land. Those types of restrictions do allow golf courses' uses within them, because the state and the town, and even the Cape Cod Commission, have, in other instances, recognized the conservation benefits can still be preserved by having this type of recreational amenity in place. And in fact, actually, in some cases, it can work to help the habitat. In this case, we have box turtle, where you may have long grasses planted as a result of this type of use that can actually promote the habitat. The administrative modification isn't very important to this process. We think that it does qualify for that. We think that you can readily find the changes to be insubstantial to the original permit. The timing is important, because we have the potential repeal of the 40B bylaw in November. So, building permits for new housing would have to be issued by December 31st of this year. There is some suggestion that that new law would not apply to, or the repeal of that law would not apply to projects where building permits, at least one building permit, had already been issued. But until that actually happens, we don't know if that exclusion is going to be in place, is going to remain in place, and how it's going to be applied by the state and the town. And I'm not suggesting that there might be a gray area there, but I am suggesting that we're not really sure how that's going to come about, if it comes about at all. So, our concern, or the concern of the housing trust, is trying to achieve this modification and have the building permits in hand before December 31st, so we don't have to even worry or concern ourselves about potential gray area issues if that 40B repeal is adopted in November. So, I expect you may have questions, and be happy to answer them, and...
Thanks. Thank you very much. Again, where this is not just typical hearing, we're not going to go through referrals, etc., but there was new information that did come in. I'm going to ask the clerk to just read in. I don't even know if you have seen it, Laura.
This is a memo from Mark Casterson, conservation agent, and he spoke with Natural Heritage today, stating that the Esker Place project has been represented by the Avalon Community Group, or Consulting Group. It's handwritten, so it's not real clear to read. Letter had been reviewed, and that it is a priority habitat. Meeting was scheduled for December 2009 to discuss the project, but no decision has been made.
That's correct. That review has not been completed, and Kelly Cardoza's here from Avalon Consulting, and she can comment a little bit more if you'd like some further information on that review process. We would anticipate that the board could condition this modification to have that review completed prior to issuance of any occupancy permits for the dwellings, or obviously, construction commencement of the practice range. But that's going to be...
But you're trying to get your building permit, so you were careful with what you said there in terms of prior to occupancy or the practice range?
Well, because there are issues involved, if the board isn't inclined to modify the permit, there's a substantial review process that's going to be undertaken through Natural Heritage. So, you, in essence, want to know that the town is in favor of the modification before you start that process, which is probably going to be three to six months and very expensive. So, that's why I think that it can be conditioned so that that review process is completed before, even before any clearing commences for the golf practice range, or occupancy permits are issued for the dwellings. So, the board can tie that review in.
Depending on where we go with this, you may be asked to put that little phrase together.
Sure.
Okay. But let's go with questions before we start to have comments or whatever. Okay, so, any questions? And again, we're trying to focus on, at least initially, our hurdle is whether or not this is substantial or insubstantial. And if we can focus there, get past that, then we can ask some questions about the modification itself.
I don't feel the two additional dwelling units are substantial. I don't have any...
Do you have a question, please?
Oh, just a question.
Yeah, let's just start with questions. I'll start off. I do have a couple of questions. One of the real differences between administrative approval and hearing is notice to abutters. Have you reached out at all to the abutters? Because if I look at your map on the second page, where the two houses are going, there almost looks like there's vacant land directly across, but typically, you would be notifying the abutters. And have you reached out to any of them to let them know that there might be two new homes?
Certainly, the Esker Place residents, this has been discussed with them. Annie, do you want to comment, or George, a little bit?
The housing trust has been more active than I, so maybe Annie could answer that for you.
And to me, that's one of the big differences. That's what I'm trying to wrestle with, you know. We would notify everyone, you know, within three hundred feet, so have you had any conversations? Annie, for the record.
Anne Saganek, executive director for the Falmouth Housing Trust. I have had several communications, if you will, with the Esker Place Homeowners Association. There's a letter of support in your file from them. Also, to add to Laura's introduction, Trish Hurley is the president of the Esker Place Association. She's also a board member. She's here. In terms of additional abutters, sorry, I hope you can hear me. This is actually an N-Star easement.
Yep. Across Sam Turner is really my issue.
I personally haven't, no. Not as yet. But I'm happy to.
I mean, that's the one thing, when we do, even though we're doing this publicly, we haven't notified people.
Yeah.
And, you know, so I just, there was a question.
It's sort of a catch-22. It's hard to know when you reach out and say this may be happening or not. You know, I spoke with certainly the residents...
No problem with that. You've covered that very clearly. I just wanted to know if there had been any comment, you know, particularly across the street.
Kelly can comment a little bit about the abutters to the practice range.
Excellent.
We've spoken...
Full name, Kelly?
Oh, I'm sorry. Kelly Cardoza with Avalon Consulting.
Thank you.
The abutters to the practice range area are Frank and Christine Wooding here. We've spoken directly to them. In fact, they would be providing an easement across a small portion of their property for access from one side to the other, and that document is in place at this point in time. We've also spoken with Maureen Harlow-Hawks, who's fully aware of the proposal for the practice range at this location. Both of those, we talked to N-Star, actually, partly because, as part of the natural heritage process, they asked us to please consider acquiring additional property for the protection of the box turtle. And so, after we met with them in the letter that you referenced, one of the things that we did was go and talk to all the abutters and ask them about whether or not they would be willing to grant a conservation restriction over some of their land in favor of the box turtle, as a way of providing additional mitigation for natural heritage.
Any answer to that, Laura?
The answer to that was no. So, the result of that was that the project has been scaled back. The project that we took to Natural Heritage was a little bit larger than the project that you see here. There were three house lots, and there was a larger range. This project, we believe, meets Natural Heritage's requirement, and would result in a mitigation ratio that's appropriate for them.
Let's just take the communication first, okay. In contacting the two real abutters and then N-Star, did you talk just about the practice range, or did you talk about the two new homes?
They know about the entire project. They know what it will look like.
Okay. But nothing across Sam Turner at this point?
We have not contacted anyone across Sam Turner.
Okay. All right. As the rest of you are thinking, I hope you don't mind, I'll go on a couple of other questions.
Could I just add to that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, sure.
Just a comment, that obviously, the 40B regulations look to the number of units as being somewhat determinative of whether or not public notice is required, because with a public hearing comes public notice to abutters. And the state has said in the regulations that if you're at ten percent or less for your development, that they don't deem, I think in effect what the regulations are saying, is that they don't deem that kind of notice as being required, because it's essentially an insignificant number of additional units to the entire development.
It's actually in the area, though, that's called commentary and examples. So, it's guidance. It's not regulatory mandate in terms of a percentage.
But it's guidance, and this board has typically followed that guidance for many years in terms of determining what is substantial or insubstantial. There also was an article in the newspaper about this project as well. So, I don't think that in itself should be determinative of whether or not the change is substantial or insubstantial.
Thank you. If I can go on, because I've got a couple of other questions. The, why the administrative process is important, I think you were saying, is because of the potential of the 40B repeal and not knowing where the timeframe is, and you said that, I won't go and paraphrase too much, but at least one permit might be issued. That's sort of the guidance that you're hearing about that. But if we're looking at the original project as being a twenty-home project, we've had twenty permits, I mean, eighteen permits have been issued. Have you talked to anyone at DHCD regarding whether or not existing projects can be modified?
It affects the repeal?
Yeah.
Well, if it's repealed, then the entire law's going to be repealed, so there's not going to be any opportunity to modify projects. All of the law will be repealed.
Okay.
So, that'll be it.
That's interesting.
But that's what's difficult about this potential repeal, because we don't know what could happen until the legislature acts again.
I've always thought that we issued the permit, the comprehensive permit, and we own it, so therefore, we can modify it with or without the state, because we may have granted it under a state law that doesn't exist anymore.
That's what my understanding is.
Makes me think of some arguments you've made recently about laws that are in the town that have changed. So, if the state does away with 40B, we own this permit.
And I disagree, because your authority to allow for a modification to the permit is under the 40B statute and regulations that are adopted under the statute. If that law is repealed, you have no guidance, you have no jurisdiction anymore. What is your jurisdiction? It's not under the zoning bylaw. It's not under the town charter. So, this is what I'm suggesting, is that these are very critical, important issues, that this fall and winter, we don't know how they're going to play out. And if the repeal does go through, that's going to be an issue, I think, that the legislature has to deal with immediately with a new law.
One final question that I have, and then hopefully, this will encourage some other questions. The wildlife corridor that was an important part of the original permit, did you have a chance to talk to V and R at all in terms of what happens when we put a practice range in there?
We, as of today, I received a call from the town planner, I gather, that because there's no referral process for these administrative modifications...
Not for administrative, yeah.
That we actually contacted Mark Patton at Brian Currie's suggestion, and emailed him some plans. So, as far as the wildlife corridor goes, he did not comment back to us this afternoon. But, in the original comprehensive permit, it does discuss specifically that the esker is the important feature of the deer corridor, that also, with the state review of the practice range, they're going to be looking at priority habitat and rare species. They will be looking at those issues as well. So, the fact that the golf practice range is going to be there, there's not going to be any fencing that would prohibit deer movement, and it's going to be an open area. So, I can't speak for Mark Patton, but what I could suggest, if the board wanted to hear his comments, and you were inclined to grant the administrative approval, that there simply be a condition that Mark Patton's comments be submitted, and if there are any issues, that it comes back to the board.
I promise, the final question for a moment is, on the two new proposed residential lots, you have looked at a parking plan that will not require an additional curb cut?
We have on the plan.
And again, I know typically, we're, you know, not ever looking at final plans, etc., but I was just more concerned about curb cuts on Sam Turner.
Yeah, the plan that you have in your file is showing separate curb cuts. I think, whoops, that's essentially proposed, because you have plenty of frontage there. You have a hundred feet of frontage on each lot. You have limited development coming into those lots. So, we felt, the engineers felt, that separate curb cuts for each lot is reasonable and suitable, but...
Yeah, I just worry so much about that being such a fast cut to Sam Turner, having more curb cuts. But, those are my questions. So, if the board has other questions, and then we can sort of chat about this idea.
I think I have a lot of questions. I think I have enough that I don't want to ask them tonight. I want to know more before I can ask questions. Unfortunately, I don't like the, for lack of a better term, the threat of a repeal of a law that has not been repealed to force us to make a hasty decision. It's significant for the people that live on the east side of Sam Turner. If this was two empty lots in Esker Place, I might consider lots to be de minimis, but they're not. They're down the street from it. I don't know anything about this driving range. I just have so many questions on it, that I don't think that this could be an administrative review, and I feel badly about that. But, you know, we weren't put here by the selectmen to just rush things through. We were put here to think about them. And I haven't had time to think about this, so there's no way I could give my support to an administrative review of this tonight.
Let me just clarify one thing for you. You could still do an administrative review over matter of a number of public meetings without having to go to the hearing process. But if you think it requires the hearing process, then administrative review is appropriate. So, it's not just the number of questions you might have, but it's the process itself.
I understand the distinction. Okay. Maybe I'll just wait and see what others have to say as well.
I have a point on that.
Yeah, and I'm not arguing it. First of all, does anyone have any additional questions? If not, we'll sort of chat about it. You said you have a lot, but you don't want to talk about it right now. Questions on whether or not it's substantial or insubstantial. Because if I'm not mistaken, if we deem it to be substantial, we have to hold a hearing within thirty days and make a decision within forty days of this evening. Okay? So, A, we might rush things through before December, but B, there's also some time pressure that's put on the board, too.
That's okay.
Yeah.
That's what we're here for.
Well, go right ahead.
One concern I have, and Laura mentioned it, about notice. It was in the paper. Well, guess what? I read the paper pretty thoroughly, and I live half a mile away from this, and I didn't know about it until it came here. So... So, if I didn't know about it as a member of the board who reads the paper on a regular basis, and I'm pretty much comfortable with what's going on in my little community of Sam Turner Road out there, I didn't know about it. Okay? So, if I didn't know about it, how many other people don't know about it? I understand that their association has signed off on it, but we don't know that everybody there has been noticed and have the opportunity to come actually see what's going on here. And my other concern is with the practice range, you're going to be stripping everything that's out there on a heavily treed parcel and going into the deer corridor on a heavily treed parcel. You know, I need to see weighing in from DNR on that. On the wildlife corridor, there's a lot of deer out there. So, I have some real reservations as much as we need affordable housing and I'm always pushing affordable housing. I'd love to see two more units without any doubt and I'd love to see for the trust to be able to gain some income from this. But at the same time, I don't want to read about this board approving something and have people come out of the woodwork that we did something without notice.
One comment?
I heard about it a couple of weeks ago before I went away and it was in a, in one of the papers. I think there's been a lot of discussion because of all the other issues going on in town. But I do have a question for you. From the scowl that you hear coming out of Austin, has it really looked like the 40B thing has got a big chance of being revoked?
It's really hard to say. You know, the affordable housing agencies aren't going to be weighing in on that because they can't. I don't know really, to tell you the truth.
You don't hear anything, no other towns, other attorneys?
But in many ways, she has no option but to think that it might be repealed in that way.
Nothing concrete. I mean, certainly it's on the ballot, you know, and we have to plan for it. I mean, we don't have a choice but not to. We can't guess.
To the point, this board has actually been planning in case of the appeal in our joint meetings with the planning board, so we've been talking about it, too.
Yeah.
Patty Carmen's?
I'll admit, I didn't hear anything about it until...
Well, you were away.
No, like five days. Now, I'm always here. But I, it seems like stripping a big piece of property of all its trees is significant to me, even though you can do it. It is significant. I think there are a lot of trees on that piece. Plus the fact it looks like it's going to have to fill because of the unevenness, I don't know. Driving ranges to me always are level. This doesn't, this doesn't, when you look at the contours, it looks like it's got a lot of contours in that parcel. And you also mentioned it's a smaller proposal and was originally submitted and I don't know what smaller means, what was the original, you know? It's complex, I must admit.
Does the board have seen the application? Just sort of curiosity. It's been in your office for a month or so. Has everybody read it?
I have gone through it, that's why I was able to ask you the questions I did.
All right. Because it's been there since the 2nd of September, so if you haven't read it, then certainly that might be reason to table this so that you can read it because there's quite a bit of information in there that, pages and pages of information that may answer some of those questions. I think it goes back to the same issue of notice and, you know, certainly it was, discussion of the 40B repeal was not intended as a threat. It's just a reality, you know, that housing organizations have to deal with and plan for and look to the timing of actually securing building permits before the end of the year to meet that mission. So, it was just really offered for informational purposes to let you know what we're up against.
Laura, can I ask you a question before I ask the board to vote? Because I'll also remind the board that this is under the comprehensive permit regulation, so it's going to be a three-person majority that carries the decision, not our typical If this were to go through a hearing, the time period would be 30 days. We have to have the hearing. 40 days, we have to make a decision. That's bound upon us. Other than the cost involved, how would it negatively affect you? Because we also have the authority to waive the fees that we generate for a nonprofit organization. We can't waive building commissioners' fees and other things, but we certainly can waive our fees. And as I say that by, when I'm listening to these folks and we're talking about an old project, a 1990 project that people got used to and it's comfortable and all of a sudden, you know, it's different. And it's not just, you know, I look at the guidance and I say, okay, you know, 10% of the height of the buildings, that doesn't apply and, you know, housing units. But, you know, DHCD is out down here looking at the fact that, yeah, we're stripping a parcel and it might be good and I love the income part of it. I love all of those things, but how much do we really hurt you by making a decision within 40 days?
Well, if you have 30 days to hold a hearing, you're looking at the end of October.
Yep.
And if you have 40 days to issue a decision, you're looking at the 10th of November.
Right.
Then you have to have the written decision issued, which maybe is the 20th of November. Unless you can do it within 40 days, maybe you can. Then there's an appeal period on the decision.
Except the appeal period now basically says, I don't want to apply to comprehensive permits. You can go ahead with it.
Except the building commissioner will not do that. The building commissioner will not do it until the appeal period is over.
So, you're looking at the end of November realistically for the housing trust to know affirmatively that it can apply for building permits. You may not get a building permit in 30 days. Maybe you can, but it's just a timing issue, you know, and...
Well, I wanted, I wanted the board to hear what that impact would be because I'm thinking, you know, we can waive our fees, so it doesn't really impose you on you. This is affordable. Let me just throw out for discussion for the board, again, as I said, we can continue this administrative discussion for a period of time and I'm sure it'll get some press out of it. And perhaps, you know, the question is, Annie, you made a point about, you know, when is the good or the bad time? That's not the good one to go by. And I guess my response to you is the good time is always right up front. Don't ever, ever, ever sneak something in behind somebody. And I'm not saying that you're doing that, but the good time to talk to people is right up front. And I just wonder between now and the next meeting that we have, you could do some of those things and would that make the board happier? I don't know. Just a thought. Annie, I'd recognize you for sure.
Well, I would invite you to come and walk the property. It seems like you think that the trees are of value and I'm a tree lover myself. I would tell you that it's scrub pine and sand and dirt. It's not lovely.
I actually did go out to the property because I needed to be familiar. It's a project that's way before my time, before I was born, I think.
Wow. I should get on the ZVA.
I had to go out there, Annie, and look at it.
Okay, good. And then I have one question, not to be persnickety, but if it has been filed since the 2nd of September, I would ask why no one has seen it?
Oh, I...
The paperwork, oh, you've seen it?
Oh, I would, I would think that the entire board has seen it.
I don't know if every board member, but it's...
We haven't seen a public...
Oh, the public notice is what you're referring to?
We have not, no, we have not seen the presentation.
Not the actual application?
Exactly.
Okay, all right. Point of clarification, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. God, don't give me a heart attack.
What?
My board does its job.
No, I was just, I couldn't tell if you were talking about the public notice.
So, all right, I'm going to force you into it then if you're not going to do something.
I'll give you a suggestion.
Okay.
I don't know if this will help Dennis at all. It's a pretty easy process of going in and ordering a certified abutters list and sending out certified notice to the abutters. If this board was going to continue under the...
Administrative.
Administrative process, that is not going to be extremely costly to the applicant. That would, one of my concerns is notice to abutters. That is a big, big concern to me. I have a big concern about clearing that wildlife corridor area. I mean, those are my concerns. I just don't, it just bothers me, as Matt said, let's deal with it now as opposed to what we're going to deal with later. All that we need is one person not to be noticed and have us do another public hearing and say, okay, yeah, we're fine with this, here we go. And I'm not comfortable with all of that coming back to the board.
Can I make a suggestion?
One second, please.
I did contact Wildlife Corridor today. They have, the Wildlife Corridor, I'm okay.
Only 9:10.
Department of Natural Resources and Brian, of course, did talk to them as well. They didn't see it as a problem, but there is a process and I asked him for that so that the board would feel more comfortable on that. So, if the board wants to wait a week or two and get that from the Department of Natural Resources to make you feel more comfortable about that, that's an option as well.
Could I make a suggestion?
Laura, please.
One possibility is you could table this for two weeks, maybe, and the applicant could voluntarily mail out a copy of the application to all of the homeowners across Sam Turner Road from Route 151 down to Caravel Drive, it's on your GIS map, so that you know that all those people across from the development, if you want, we could even mail it to the immediate abutters of the entire open space parcel. I mean, it's not a big deal to do that, to just send them all a letter saying that the permit's being modified, we're looking to do this, it's on file at the Board of Appeals. We could come back, we could show you that we've done that, we could give you the certified mailing, and by then we would have Mark Patton's information. And so, you'd just be basically tabling this discussion for two weeks.
It's because Laura knows she's going to be here October 14th.
Well, I'm not sure that one week is...
Is enough to get the permit back.
Well, just for people...
To be honest with you...
That's the date I was going to suggest.
Sort of first thing. If we do that, I would also like you to get at least some comment out of engineering regarding the curb cuts. Because that freaks me out just a little bit.
Okay.
And I think the language that you proposed earlier that I'm sure you'll give Suri in terms of the box turtle folks, I'm sure we could incorporate. But, you know, to me, the big issue is, I mean, technically, you know, we still have not, and what Laura's suggestion is doing is that we don't have to decide tonight unless you want to because it would be unfair to the applicant. If we're going to say this is so substantial that it should go through the public hearing, then let's say that, not waste their time. On the other hand, if we're going to say that what we're really trying to get out of this is people to get more involved and know what's going on, if they have no complaints, that's okay, then we don't have to, we can go ahead. But I don't want to be misleading to the applicant at all.
Well, certainly, you know, we appreciate that sentiment because we don't want to lose two weeks either. And I'm making that suggestion because I think that if the concern is notice to, you know that the immediate abutters have been, have reviewed this and we've talked to them. If the concern is the people across Sam Turner Road, which are, you know, immediate abutters to the development itself and the two new houses, I really don't see it a problem to mail them all a letter from Route 151 down to the intersection of Caravel and say, this is what's going on and it's on file and it'll be back, you know, on such and such a date for consideration. At that time, you would likely have Mark Patton's comments and if there are any further questions, you know, we'd be happy to provide further information in advance. Whatever it takes and whatever the board feels they would like to know, we're happy to provide it. So, I think that's a good way of streamlining the process and addressing those concerns and still trying to assist the housing trust. I should have mentioned, too, that the Affordable Housing Committee did review this at a public meeting and they did vote to support it and the Falmouth Housing Corporation weighed in and voted to support it and really for all the reasons that we've talked about because it's two new houses and it's 100% affordable and it's going to be a great revenue stream and a benefit, so.
If, may I ask a question? If, if you're going to do a certified mailing, is two weeks going to be enough?
She didn't suggest a certified mailing.
Oh, she didn't? I'm sorry.
Well, I can do certified. I mean, it's not looking at the GIS map.
Well, I'm just worried, I'm just worried that that wouldn't give you enough time and response time.
It can be expensive, that bothers me, too.
I thought I heard her say that, but I, that's what I was concerned about.
Well, it's only about, it's only about a dozen people.
Well, the time response, because certified, don't they have to be there to sign for it?
No, not necessarily.
No? Okay, well, that's what I was concerned about.
We could do it, we could do it by, today's Thursday, we could have it done by Monday, send it out, you know, with a, just similar to what they do with the Conservation Commission or the Board of Health, the applicant is required to give the notice of the hearing to the property owners and they do that and then they submit the certified cards.
We're the only ones that do it different.
That's right. You guys are...
We saved you a ton of money.
I shouldn't have said that because now maybe you're going to...
No, no, we're not changing our rules.
And you have to do it according to Mass General. Right, so, so I don't really see that as a problem. And, you know, it's $3 or $4, so it's maybe $50 to do it.
Tricia.
I'd like to see everybody noticed that would be noticed if it was a regular hearing. I don't want to pick and choose on who we're going to notify. I would just like every abutter that would be noticed for a normal hearing to be noticed, not just across the street, down, you know, within 100 feet or 300 feet, whatever we do for notification. And whether Laura does it off the GIS or she goes into the assessor's office and orders an abutters list, doesn't need to be certified abutters, she can just order in a abutters list and that notices everybody that would be impacted under a regular hearing. And it doesn't have to, I don't have a problem with...
And I don't think it needs to be certified, no.
No, and I think if you go into the assessor's office, I feel very confident if you go in or Annie goes in and asks for it, the fee will be waived because it's a nonprofit organization, so they won't have to pay for that, so...
Okay, and just by regular mail, then?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be people within 300 feet?
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
So, we all sort of...
Do you know anybody in the assessor's office?
Not tomorrow, I won't. I think if you go in there, you'll be fine.
All right, so with this, we're sounding like it's comfortable that we'll move forward with the administrative process.
I think that's a good compromise.
Okay.
I was going to suggest October 14th. Now, that is the day that Laura has another 40B before us, that we meet at 5:00.
Yeah, I think that's...
So, I just wanted to remind the board that's...
If that's all right with you, that's, we keep our mind on 40B, that's probably a good way to do it.
And it's convenient. Because that's the only meeting we have.
That's, what, 4:30?
5:00.
5:00, okay. So, we'll do that following...
Because otherwise, we can't do anything until after November 4th, so.
All right. And, you know, again, just for the board to know, it's not a hearing, even though we're notifying people and you may want to, you know, it's what you want to do, Laura, with that letter, we're not dictating what it is, but maybe you suggest that if they do have any concerns or comments, to contact you or Annie or the board or to write letters because not a hearing, I'm probably not going to elicit public testimony.
Yeah, I'll just say that there'll be a public meeting held on October 14th at 5:00 to consider the request for...
And it's on file in the office.
And the application's on file, just like we do with Conservation or the Board of Health, simple notice letter.
And again, I think the concerns, and I want to make sure everyone's got them out there, you've had concerns over the wildlife, the NEPA business, but I think you've addressed the NEPA business and I had concerns about the road, the road cuts. Curb cuts, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yes.
All right. So, we will, I will entertain a motion to table this administrative modification until October 14th.
5:00 PM, yes.
At 5:00 PM.
So moves.
Mr. Murphy, Mr. Erickson, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous vote. Thanks for working with us, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. The second one is...
All right, Brenda and Jeff. Welcome to the second night of administrative considerations.
I'm just getting flying around. It's here in this room. Over there. It's landing on our table.
I have to come like, hold on, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Laura, thank you.
This is much more severe. I'm freezing.
And these are the new plans.
Two tax dollars at work.
Have they been stepped on?
Yeah. And again, these were... These administrative were also in the office and I hope everybody saw them. The only difference is these plans were submitted today with a very good explanation.
Okay. All right. Let me just bring everyone back together, okay? The next, and interesting that we do two on one night, but is also another administrative modification. This is one that I felt, first of all, we do not have the obligation like we did under the 40B regulations to make a determination as to whether or not it's substantial or not. This is just going to be our gun to go with. And it was my... That it was way beyond my ability to administrate to approve it, certainly not within the scope of Suri's mandate. But I did think it was something that, not only because of the nature of who is doing it, but the scope of it and the layout of it that I didn't think we had the same concerns like we just talked about. So this is before you on an administrative modification. And you can choose not to do that if you want. As Suri just mentioned, the plans have been there for some time. I know I had a couple of questions that, based on the new plan that just was delivered today, based on a little show and tell, I guess, has been modified a little bit. So with that, Jeff, I know you're doing pro bono and I appreciate that on behalf of those of us in the citizens in town that appreciate the work that's being done by the Service Center. We've kept you here all night, so it's okay.
For the record, Jeff Oppenheim. I'm an attorney here in town. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of the Falmouth Service Center, I'm proud to say. And I'm trying to assist them in implementing the plan that is before you for administrative review. The Board of Directors of the Falmouth Service Center went through an elaborate strategic planning process that started last spring and went basically through the summer. And we're about to report it at, you know, our annual meeting to the community in a more formal way. The number one thing for the Board of Directors, after meeting for many hours on strategic planning, was to improve site conditions as you see here before you. Brenda Swain, who's here with me, I failed to introduce her, but I think you all know her.
No introduction.
She's our executive director. I think she very eloquently, in a letter attached to our request, has laid out the tremendous surge in need in our community that has been documented by the number of volunteers and also the number of people we're helping and the number of bags of groceries that we are giving out to our clients. And we do many other things other than give out groceries. Because of the increased demand in the last eight and a half years since you last saw this project before you, we've had to bring in larger trucks to the site. And that is a concern. It's an issue. We also have a lot more volunteers, so we're concerned about their safety when they're on the site, a lot more clients. So the need is there. We hope that the building itself is not changing, which is why we're here administratively. We're just here to add a driveway for ingress one way and egress where the existing driveway is. It actually is not a new curb cut because there exists a curb cut there which you're probably familiar with. It's being utilized for the folks primarily who go into the garden area. So, you know, we're going to take down as few trees as possible. We're going to try to do a thoughtful job. We are in touch with all of our abutters. We've got two of our abutters who have agreed to do this. The third abutter, you know, is Abbey Real Estate Trust, who the board knows I represent that for-profit entity. And they have told me they've got no problem. They've seen the plan. Robin Peters, who's the manager, he's very happy with it. He's very pleased to have the Service Center as a neighbor. I'm happy to answer any questions, specific questions about the plan. We have lighting. We increased the radius today to the entrance, which is why you got a plan today. You know, it was fine tuned. And I should add that I gave the courtesy to our planning board to take the plan up to them. I met briefly with Brian and Marlene. They gave me a few suggestions, which I passed along to Tom Bunker, who's done the plan for us. And he's been in touch with Peter. And it seems like everything is okay with our engineering department, although I'm not sure that's formally in writing yet, okay? So I'm not going to... I don't want to overstate that.
Yeah, because last I read said engineering needs drainage and stormwater clogs and...
Yeah, those were submitted. Those were submitted.
Oh, that's everything so...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't... When did that come in? No wonder why I didn't see it come in today. One day I haven't been in this week, too.
Yeah, we apologize for the kind of rush, rush.
And engineering's been busy moving, so that's why most of it's been verbally.
Well, why don't I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
And say, just quickly, one of the things that I had noticed was there didn't seem to be a lot coverage calculation on the plan.
I think you're correct.
So...
And we could get that for you, certainly as a condition of the administrative approval.
Engineering, it looks like it's been addressed. And just for the record, what were the number of parking spaces? Because I got confused a little bit there in terms of plus nine over at the garden and what was there sub...
Right.
What is it... What was approved at and what is it going to?
Okay. Let me just double check the prior decision unless Brenda happens to know that answer.
I thought it was 26.
Yeah, but we're gaining 26.
It was 26.
Yeah, we're building 40.
Right.
But we're losing 14 in the process of building the 40. So it's a net gain of 26, okay?
It was 26 and you're adding another 26 for 52?
No, it was 14.
No, he wants to know total spots.
Total spots being added.
Right. Originally, it was 26. And when we walk away from approving this, what will it be?
26 additional spots.
So 42 in total.
That's 52.
52. 52. Bad math.
That's not what it was originally.
Jeff, I'm not just talking about the 14 you're eliminating. Total spots on this.
Oh, total spots in the site, okay.
Yeah.
Going from 26 up to...
It should be on the plan. Is it not on the plan?
Mine's 42.
There's 40 here.
42. But, you know, there's additional spots right here where you have that number. These are all... These are newer spots.
Right.
And everything else is existing.
So that's why I'm trying to get down to a number of... 26 had been approved. What are we walking away with today?
Is that 26?
Yeah, there is a gain of 26.
26, right, is what that is. And that spot over in that area has parking.
So it's 52 altogether.
I don't think it's 52. It's 40 something, I believe. I'm sorry.
Trish finds 61. I think it's 52. Melanie's shaking her head. I have no idea.
Well, originally, what you're talking about is the garden center over here, the parking spots, were not approved with the Service Center plan.
What, they're outside of that?
So that's confusing because those are included in there, okay?
Which don't really technically need to be...
Right. And he's not showing it on this plan.
Right.
So I haven't checked.
So here, you've got...
I think there's a reason section on that.
You've got a total of 42. 39, oh, no. You've got 39 here. And then these.
Right.
And then these. The 41 and 42 are the two additional. These were existing. These were existing.
So altogether, you have 40 total parking spots. After tonight, will be 51.
51. Well, that's a two-five, up 52.
Okay, I thought... Gain, not gain, sorry. The reason I think our engineer didn't do the lot coverage calculations, members of the board, is because, and I don't want to speak for him, but I believe the reason is that because we're really utilizing more than one lot here. We have arrangements with our... It's very incestuous. We have arrangements with our abutters, with the Falmouth Service Center Nominee Trust and the Falmouth Housing Corporation for cross easements and things like that. So the lot that the Service Center owns is a very odd-shaped lot which runs in roughly like this, encompasses the structure and comes out here, okay? And so over here is another property owner and over here another property owner. So and this property owner wraps around the back, okay? So really, you know, we're sort of on three different lots, our activities.
And I didn't ask for it in my review with Jeff, Brenda, and then talking with the engineers. I didn't ask for it because of the complexity of it.
Makes sense.
Because there already are easements in place.
Again, looking at the site and knowing the players involved, I didn't expect you to represent Robin Peters in saying that, but I'm very pleased that you did.
Yeah, I'm able to do that very happily.
Excellent. Excellent. What are the questions the board have? I mean, typically, as you know, under administrative review, I've been given the power to sign off on a lot of these things, but I felt it was more complex. And before I do, we're just going to technically make the motion. Dennis?
For the next 15 minutes.
Okay. We'll continue tonight's meeting till 9:45. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So what questions might you have? I mean, the questions I would have had, which I've raised and did with Suri beforehand, they've already, you know, talked to their neighbors. They've voluntarily talked to planning. They've gone to engineering. We've got a thorough report from engineering. We've got a thorough response from engineering.
Got the letter of agreement.
That I haven't read yet, but Suri has. I just don't find a reason not to do this and not to do it without that in for a hearing.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I don't either. So I think my only question is, should we put this to a vote?
I'd be willing to entertain that.
So moved.
Mr. Murphy? Any discussion? Okay. The conditions would be per plan submitted.
And a copy of the actual signed easement submitted to...
Copy of the actual signed easement. And I would like you just to put the lot coverage on the plan. You can write them on. Total lot coverage.
For lot two, the lot that we own?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you're right. It gets confusing, but I sort of look at it thinking, oh, my God. But, yeah.
And we have data, it's September 30th.
Okay. This certainly is not going to be any more detrimental to the neighborhood, given its location. There has been communications with the abutters and no opposition. These are findings.
If anything, it's an improvement as the access.
And particularly after today's little demonstration, it is definitely... So with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Jeff, thank you for your efforts. Brenda, always going to the community. All right. And with that, I will close this meeting.